Okay, people are jumping on now, so why don't we go ahead and get started? Good afternoon, or good morning, everybody, and welcome to our follow-on discussion on facilities. Like to call to order the Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting for September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's eleven thirty-one AM, and we're meeting in a hybrid mode, mostly virtual here, except for possibly in our conference room. So, um, again, welcome everyone, and I think I'll turn it over to Holly to kind of set the tone for today's meeting.
Great, thanks. Well, I want to start by thanking everybody for making this extra session. It's just really nice and good to see so many folks here today. And we've got some great conversations ready, and I especially want to thank Tyler Schroder and Marty Solomon, who've been really working on trying to put materials together so that we'd have some good stuff to work off of. So Kathy, if you could please pop up the PowerPoint, I can just go over what the agenda is for today. So basically, I'm going to go through the objectives for today, and then we'll have an overview of the three prospective jail sites that we discussed at our last SAC meeting. And Tyler is going to give us an overview, just kind of taking it a next step forward in terms of what that might look like. Then we're going to do some discussion, open discussion with the whole group on the pros and cons of different sites, based on the criteria that we both talked about at our last SAC meeting and kind of refined and developed. So there's more stuff in there as well, based on our last conversation. And then we'll want to summarize kind of areas of agreement and disagreement. So we have no, I have no idea if we're going to be like, yes, the path is clear, or if it will be all over the map. Wherever we are is where we are, and then we'll take stock, and then we'll get out of here at one o'clock. So we have about an hour and a half. So we'll get as far as we can, and hopefully everybody just jumps in when we get into the conversation. The main objective here is we're going to evaluate the sites, and if we can, develop a recommendation. And then we would present that to the SAC in the October meeting, which is coming right up. Next site? Okay, so these are the criteria that we identified so far, and again, that's from the the work we did on the survey, and then we talked about it at SAC. And then I'm going to have, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler here, and he's going to help us kind of look at these three sites, and then we'll start thinking about these criteria. Before we get on any farther, though, can we take off the slideshow for a minute, Kathy? Um, I just want to check, is everybody, you got your names all figured out? Good. Are there any questions before we get started? Because I know I'm just jumping right in, but is everybody clear on what we're doing, what our hopes are for today? Good, thanks. Thanks, Kendra. Okay. Great. Let's jump in there. Tyler, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks, Holly. Good morning, everybody. Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive at Waukesha County. Good to see everybody. Thanks so much for joining on this important topic. As Holly indicated, we've been doing some background work, thinking through ways to engage the Stakeholder Advisory Committee, to be thoughtful and understand what potential sites might be available and how that works in a framework that has been discussed. As Holly indicated, there is some criteria that's already somewhat been established, and that has to do with the capacity as well as some location to sites. So the capacity discussion would be to look at a site that's large enough to build a horizontal facility that would be big enough to handle future growth of inmate population, and incorporate all those services that we have talked about in the past. And I think with the line services underlined, I want to echo back to the work that the Stakeholder Advisory Committee did in August, developing and kind of formulating the list of services that Lieutenant Erickson, Caleb, put together on housing units as well as classrooms and rec yards and locations to have different services within the facility. So that's that point. We can get a little bit further into that later. And then also just adjacent space that could be used or purchased through future expansion. And as Stakeholder Advisory Committee members know, a lot of this was in the matrix that was sent out. And so this is just to facilitate that conversation. But the matrix asked questions like proximity to criminal legal system resources, the courthouse, police and sheriff, public defenders, the work center, crisis services, the crisis stabilization center, public transit, residential areas in proximity to high density or distance from schools, as well as compatibility to neighboring uses. Some of those are a science, and some of those are to answer those questions, right? And so I think this is going to show some of the complexity to citing essential public facilities like a public safety facility. And there has been a couple of different efforts that we are going to build this conversation with the Stakeholder Advisory Committee off of, to provide that background. And then more recently, just the discussion about what this committee thinks should be in the facility, and shows some square footage, some acreage of the sites, as well as of the type of facilities that we've been talking about. So I think we can skip to the next. There's three different sites in county ownership that the community has been talking about over the years that we thought would be a good starting point for this conversation. I would say ones in the civic center. Let me be clear, that is not the city center, that is the civic center next to the courthouse down here in the city of Bellingham. The other would be the Iron Gate or Division Street, out where the current work center is in the crisis stabilization center. And then the other county-owned property is the Ferndale, the LaBounty Road property, which as the Stakeholder Advisory Committee notes, was subject to the last couple of rounds of of votes and public safety tax. And we wanted to walk through that site as well as we talk about this. So we can go through, we have aerials of the three sites. This is the civic center site. If you see, there's red lines that outline the location of it, and those red lines are county-owned parcels. So it's a little hard to read, but what I wanted to recognize was the acreage of those county-owned parcels. So in total, the red outline is about five point three acres. But you'll see in the middle, there were the courthouse and the existing jail is, that's two point seven seven acres. So I think there's been some discussion in the community about the southern parking lot, which is on this, the left of the courthouse is one point three acres, is the total area of that parking lot. And that's an important thing to think about as we talk about a horizontal facility and the size that you would need to construct a horizontal facility. On the right side of this photo is what some people refer to as the pit. It's a parking lot that the county uses. That's one point three acres as well. So in total, this property is five, five point three acres. Usable vacant area is one point three in two different locations. And then it's surrounded by the post office, the library, you know, city hall, the museum and other private ownership. So that's just an overview of the first site that we thought would be an important dialogue. So next site. So this is the Iron Gate, Division Street location. The main building in the middle with the green roof is the work center. The building in the bottom in the middle is the new crisis stabilization center, which was really hatched out of the incarceration prevention reduction task force and some of the past efforts. Huge success for our community as relates to behavioral health. The red outlined area shows that the outline of county ownership. Recently, the county did acquire three and a half acres to the west or to the right on this photo as you look at it. And so the overall acreage of this property is about ten point six acres, about ten and a half acres, with the jail work center as well as the crisis stabilization, about three and a half acres of usable property. And the work center, when originally constructed, was constructed in a way that it could be repurposed, although the repurposing of it would take a lot of effort and wear it goes. So that's a concept to this property and outline of it. So the third property. This is the Ferndale or LaBounty Road site. A lot of the members are probably aware of this from the two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen efforts for the public safety sales tax. This site is thirty-nine acres in total. Has about sixteen acres of developable land along LaBounty Road. As you go to the left on this picture or to the west, it does go down a hill and has some wetlands in the area. So kind of sixteen to eighteen acres of developable location here at LaBounty Road. So those are the three sites that we're going to kind of walk through to help facilitate this, and that's in the matrix. And I think what we'll do is now look at the, think about the capacity question. So what we wanted to walk through is Councilmember Lillquist.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure when I should come up, but I'd rather it came up early. I would sort of like to interrogate the criteria themselves, rather than assume that there's, that the criteria are self-explanatory and fully justified. When might that happen?
I think that's a great question. I was just going to get back to the criteria. So maybe Kathy, if you want to, or whoever's running, go back up to slide four, I think it is.
Yep.
And Holly, I'll let you kind of facilitate that conversation if you'd like.
Okay, before we jump into that, which we can, we can talk through these, Michael, that's, that's not, that'll be great. But I'd like to hear, there's a couple other hands before, or at least one hand, either it's just two. Stark, what was your thought?
Yeah, I just had a question for Tyler. Tyler, has there been any consideration of doing a condemnation or eminent domain type action to acquire property that is different than these three sites?
No, there has not been any indication of condemnation for acquisition of additional sites. There is always conversations about potential sites and acquiring potential sites, but there hasn't been in regards to condemnation.
Okay. Great. So anything else before we look at these, what the criteria that have been identified so far? Okay, so yeah, go ahead, Michael. What are you thinking, or what are you having questions about?
I'm seeing kind of, one part may be problematic is that these criteria, some of them seem like we're trying to cite a prison rather than cite a jail. For example, the idea that a jail shouldn't be near schools or residential areas, yet paradisically should be near public transit. You're not going to have that, right? And the people who are in jail, many of them, as we've learned, are very short-term stay. They're not convicted felons. They are actively involved in legal proceedings. So this isn't a warehouse for known dangerous people, but the citing criteria, especially the, you shouldn't be near schools and residences, acts as if we're citing a prison. The jail is near all these community facilities and residences and schools now. And I've yet to hear a single problem from that fact. So that's, that's one of my concerns.
Pause right there. So when, I remember you bringing that up at the SAC meeting too. And I'm also remembering that, you know, we had ranked these and kind of like, how important is this consideration? And I think, I just want to ask Marty here, these include all of the criteria that were on the survey monkey originally, correct?
Yeah, and then we also have a few additional criteria that came from comp plan kind of citing, citing criteria, but yes, these were all on the survey.
Okay, so we know that some of them, we could probably even pop up those slides. Some of those were quite a bit lower, and I have memory that distance from schools and high-density residential areas was just lower in terms of importance in people's.
That's right, those were the lowest, and so we can just keep that in mind as we go through the, how the sites rank on these things.
Great, okay. So Michael, the point we'll take in, yeah, like how this isn't a prison, it's a jail. And I think we do, there is a sense of not, not all of these are the same weight.
Well, but I think maybe that should really drive the weighting. For example, adjacency to public offenders courthouse should rank very highly, right? Not just as a good thing, because again, people aren't actively proceeding, they've not been adjudicated for the most part.
I think that's part of, maybe where it's also a little tricky is because that wasn't in our original survey. That was in our discussion. So I think as we talk, like the importance of that one, proximity to the criminal legal system may end, was that on the, did that get ranked on, oh, my apologies. I have a hard time, there's so many surveys now, so little time.
It was the highest proximity of criminal legal system was the highest. And so, yes, Michael, I think we can keep referencing those survey results as weights, you know? That's what, that's what they are. I think the way you described it is really good, what we should do, yeah.
Yep. Okay, Michael, keep going. You had more?
Um. This one is really technical, that horizontal is the best practice. I think there's a confusion between whether or not a block should be visible and easily managed by the correctional staff, and a horizontal layout with good eyes on is critically important. But whether or not those blocks are stacked vertically or laid side by side, I think is a different issue. So even the so-called horizontal facility that was scoped for out in Ferndale actually had prisoners in two stories within the same block. But there was eyes on from a single story that spanned both of those that the correctional staff had on those people in the block. So what seems to me what's critical isn't horizontality, but eyes on and good viewpoints, and I think you can get that in a stacked structure.
Why don't we pause on that one in particular, because that's kind of been added on as a consideration for best practices. Caleb, is this, are you doing a direct response to that? Am I guessing right? Okay, why don't you, could we take off the slideshow for a minute? And Caleb, why don't you speak to the thinking behind that?
Yeah, let me see if I can lower my hand too. I didn't do it. There we go. So a couple of things and good points to consider when you're talking about best practice for building a correctional facility. Regardless of what option we select, it needs to be, we need to be mindful of how much it costs to build something and how much it costs to operate it long-term. Those are the key criteria that we're looking at when we talk, when we cover, you know, build out versus build up. And so we find in corrections practice today that building up costs more to operate longer term than building out. Although, Councilmember Lillquist is exactly right. Any proposal that we discuss should have the option of having, you know, maybe two tiers of operation where a lower tier is ground level, and then you have accessible via stairway, an upper tier for each housing unit. But we've got to maintain ADA accessibility and emergency, which is one of the main problems that we have in the civic center building right now, is because if we have elevators that we're using that are unreliable or they fail, we can't get emergency services to each of the floors. And we're in a pretty difficult position in terms of responding to an emergency situation on an upper floor. Whereas if we had everything sort of spread out on one level, operationally, it's best practice to be able to get access to those without relying on a piece of equipment like an elevator. So accessibility issues are primary. We have to duplicate efforts with staff on multiple floors. So if we co-locate units essentially in a large circle, square, what have you, around deputy station that can monitor and observe multiple units at the same time, they can absolutely monitor and observe those two tiers. But if we had more tiers stacked on top of each other, it just means more, you know, staff members having to go to higher tiers. And again, we're duplicating efforts on upper floors. So the more you go up, the more we have to duplicate efforts in terms of that monitoring. And it also cuts into staff response times in an emergency if you're having to go between multiple floors. And you'll find that in Snohomish County, for example, which has a multi-tiered or multi-florid operation in downtown Everett. So they have an abundance of staff members simply because they have to have more staff available in emergency. I think those cover the broad brushstrokes on the up versus out conversation, but I'm obviously willing to discuss if anybody has more questions.
Great. So Michael, thanks for raising that, and if you don't mind, I'd like to go ahead and just call on some other people who haven't spoken yet. And folks, if your point has already been stated, let's try and avoid restating ideas, just in the interest of time, okay? So Sheriff Alfo, I think you're up next.
Well, I was going to repeat the same thing that Lieutenant Erickson just said. But I wanted to add, I want to counter what Councilmember Lillquist said, that there's not dangerous people being released from jail because they're, they've not yet been convicted. We see people getting out of jail all the time and quickly reoffending and coming back into the facility. So I think where it's located in terms of distance from schools, and that was a finding of the county council back in two thousand and four, that unanimously added that to the county's comprehensive plan, that no new jail could be located within a mile of a public or private school. And the other point I wanted to make, I see proximity to police and sheriff's office, I believe the sheriff's office needs to be located with the jail to make the maximum use of personnel and perhaps combine some administrative functions. But I just don't want to lose sight in the discussion that the small police jurisdictions oftentimes have only one officer on duty at a time. And if that officer has to travel to downtown Bellingham to to hook someone into jail, that city is unprotected in terms of immediate response. So more central location that would be easily accessible by all the agencies close to the freeway or as close to the freeway as possible would be preferable from my perspective. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Atul, you're up.
Hi, thank you, Holly. First of all, I'd like to clarify that I was not able to attend the last SAC meeting because it sat right on top of a mandatory responsibility for me as an elected for the PUD. So I apologize. I have done my homework and looked at the postings as well as watched the videos. So apologies to my colleagues for not being present. I'd like to take a step back and express a little bit of concern about the process here today. And that concern is that, I know to a large extent, the reason that the SAC committee exists is because of prior efforts to to ask for the construction of these kinds of facilities were rejected. And there was a listening tour that occurred, and what the listening tour asked us to consider are the community's needs. And this group of people who are elected, representing various aspects of the community is perhaps, at least I would suggest, mostly ill-equipped to address the translation of requirements for facilities into facility specifications. That's typically something that people that are very closely working with the jail and the types of engineers that design facilities should largely be doing. There should be oversight of this committee, but perhaps only after those requirements are translated into specifications for the facility, including looking at various sighting locations. So that's one major concern, but the largest concern that I have is that we have not undertaken the task to the level of fidelity that I would like to see, translating the community's needs into requirements. I have looked at the documents that have been put up by Kathy regarding needs assessments. And to a large extent, those documents are more translating the, I've used this analogy of marble maze. The needs of processing people through this complicated system, this marble maze, than they are addressing the needs of families and individuals affected by the system. And the reason that's so important is if we actually do the job, identify the community's needs driven by the family and the communities, then that will provide the input that we need to translate those requirements into facility specifications. Now, I think everybody's getting that I'm on a different page. That doesn't mean I want to sabotage the questions that are being asked. I recognize that I'm not in charge of the process. I recognize that there's still ways I can contribute. But what I'm going to be doing is doing to the best of my ability to identify what I think our community needs and translating them into facility specifications. We heard Stark and others talk extensively about the need for the legal advocates to be able to access staff. I hundred percent support that. But I'd like to go a step further.
Okay, Atul, I'm going to just, if you could, because we have quite a few people here to speak. So if you could just summarize as quickly as you can, and then I'm going to start.
About another minute.
Great.
Yeah. So most of what I said before is may not be usable by anybody, but what I'm about to say, Holly, is usable. So, but I had to tell everybody where I was coming from. So Stark did a great job identifying the importance of of having legal advocates have access to their clients. But legal advocates aren't only, the only advocates for the clients. Unfortunately, many people who are incarcerated may not have the level of family support that many of us benefit from. But there are lots of advocates in the community for those who are incarcerated or in jail. And we also want to maximize the access of those advocates to folks in the system. And that means twenty-three in one, for example, or sending people away to Western State Hospital really interferes with the people are the most, quite often are the most important advocates who are live in the community. So separation from legal support is a problem, but separation from community is also a problem. And for those reasons, I'm very much looking for the types of facility specifications that minimize the separation more than is necessary. I get that separation is necessary, but let's not do it any more than is absolutely necessary.
Thank you. Great. And you were almost just at one minute. I appreciate that, Atul, and thanks for articulating your thoughts. Everybody, just in the interest of time, I'm actually just going to give you a two-minute timer, if you don't mind, so we can just keep moving along. So, Bro, you're up.
Thank you. So I guess sort of building up of what I told you said.
So I guess sort of building up of what I told you said, in past meetings, there have been some, some discussions and creative ideas about having a mental health facility so that people don't have to wither away in the jail on a 23 and 1 schedule with severe mental health challenges. And I'm wondering if this facilities discussion includes, if, if, if that is part of this, this discussion today, or is it really just focused on like a jail to incarcerate people?
Is that a question you want an answer to?
Well, I guess, like, I guess, sort of, I mean, I don't know who would be able to answer it, but like, I mean, it seems like, 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 is, is the vision, I guess, for looking at these three sites, is that part of the vision? Or, and is that like, because I think that, that, that was an idea that, that I would love some more, you know, within the context of what facilities we're going to choose to prioritize and, and build. That, that feels like an idea that, that at least some people seem interested in exploring and curious about, like, if, if, if today is, is the day for that, or is this really focused on like the jail facility or, you know, like, like when we're having a facilities discussion, like what, what facilities are we talking about when we're looking at these, these sites? And, you know, I, 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 yeah, I guess I'm wondering if maybe that, that to me might be an important conversation, conversation to have before we talk about sites, right? About like what, like what facilities we're going to be prioritizing. So yeah, I guess maybe rhetorical, but I'd love to hear other people's thoughts on that.
And the facility that, that you were particularly interested in kind of thinking about it for co-location, say it again.
Um, not necessarily for co-location, but um, so there was an idea, I think, put forward by.
Just briefly as you can.
Yeah, but I think it was Maya Lisa about rather than having people wait to be sent to Western, that, that we actually have a local facility to treat people with, you know, mental health challenges. And I think there's a number of other people that, that saw the value in that as well.
Thanks. Okay, Dan.
One of the criterion mentioned behavioral health or access to behavioral health services. I'm wondering what those services are and what, what, if, if those services could be provided within the jail facility in the future.
So, because I think that's on the list, but you're hoping for more specifics about what that would look like? Is that your, is that your question?
Yeah, I mean, if people are needing to access behavioral health services outside the facility, what does that look like? And part two is can we do some of those, some or all of those services within the facility, which would change, would basically eliminate that criterion.
Okay, got it. And so that's not dissimilar to the point that, that Ral just raised. Thank you. Good, Brooke, you're up.
I'm sorry, I know that we've moved on from this point a little bit, but I wanted to return to what Michael Liliquist said about the jail and schools. The current jail is within a mile of five schools that I know of right now. And as far as I know, I have not heard of that causing any problems. And I have lived four blocks from the jail for a few years now. And anecdotally, that has not come up as an issue in my neighborhood that I know of. So, yeah, I guess I would like to also question the need for a full mile of radius around the jail for a school.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, Jack, you're up.
Thanks, I promise not to talk about cruise ships today. I, I'm going to share the perspective on schools, but I think it's been well stated that while it's a consideration, it's one of many. But I really wanted to comment of what I think I heard Ral talking about, which was this larger picture, I suppose, of should we even be talking about facilities? And I wanted to explain why I think we should. When we did our survey, it is most even though I'm in the SAC leadership team and we've tried to frame these discussions and try to, you know, find or navigate our way through some difficult decisions and difficult data. And while true consensus is great, I don't think any of us believe we're likely to get a hundred percent on, on some of these topics. We did though get ninety percent consensus that the current facility located, sorry, Dan, I always want to call it downtown, 311 Grand, the one, the one at the civic center, is not in a condition to be used properly for those needs of incarceration. And from my perspective, and I think from the leadership of SAC's perspective, the, this, this group has clearly stated, we agree on that principle. That, I, I don't mean a hundred percent, but we agree something needs to be done to replace that. I think what that replacement looks like where it is are all open for discussion. But for me, the question of whether there should be something that's superior and better than what we have now has already been asked, answered, and we have an obligation to consider those things. And of course, also to consider what appropriate diversions, what appropriate strategies can be employed to minimize, to not incarcerate people inappropriately. All those things are on the table, absolutely. But I think the decision of whether that needs to be replaced or not, for me, is a decision that's already been made and supported by this group. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take one more comment and then I'm going to summarize. Go ahead, Wendy.
Just real quickly, I did want to make sure the committee understood that we provide mental health care in the jail. It's limited because of space issues, which you've heard of ad nauseam. But the other factor that directly impacts it is that a significant proportion of my mentally, our mentally ill offenders don't acknowledge that they have any kind of a psychiatric illness. Therefore, they're resistant to working with our mental health folks. They don't want to take medication, which makes it very difficult to get them stabilized. The other part of this is that the restrictions on what we would be able to do in order to do involuntary treatment here in the facility are very, very onerous and have been set by the Supreme Court of the United States of America. So we just don't have the capacity to do that without the ability to involuntarily treat a lot of these folks until they get to a point where they understand what's going on and then can make that decision on their own is really the responsibility and falls under the purview of the Department of Social and Health Services within the state of Washington. And the criminal justice system has a very limited ability to influence that. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. So Michael, because I did ask you to hold so that other folks could speak, if you could just summarize in one moment. And Bro, I'm going to have you wait, okay, because we're going to need to move on.
This is actually a new point, not a summary of your one. So.
More that I interrupted you in your, in your list.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to give everyone my thoughts. Um, there's kind of a dynamic aspect to site location. So for example, if it's built next to the current courthouse, then the old jail site becomes open for additional needs. That's a dynamic factor. If we pick any of the locations aside Ferndale, the Ferndale location can be liquidated and sold. And the city can use that money for the project. That's a dynamic factor. That is, that is sort of like a peculiarity with site selection that is, doesn't have to do with just the site itself. You pick Iron Gate, you suddenly have several million dollars available. If you pick Ferndale, you don't have several million dollars available. That's a site-related consideration. Rebuilding the current jail is, is also kind of like a site consideration that needs to be factored in. So where we put new mental health facilities, maybe where the current jail is, right? So there's some dynamic aspects to this also.
Yeah, great point. Thank you. Okay. So in summary, some questions about, you know, sort of the overall, like the foundation of the work together and who's in the room. Some considerations about the, kind of the facilities and, and services related to mental health in particular. And then just sort of some real questions about these, especially the proximity to, you know, schools, et cetera. So that I, I've not listed everything. And Wendy, I don't think your hand's still up, right? You're, yeah, it's okay. Okay, so we're going to go back. That was excellent and some really, really thoughtful comments. Thank you, guys. Let's go back. Tyler, we're going to, because you had a couple more slides just on the consideration so far. And, and I really appreciate you putting these pictures together. So great. Oh, here we are, we're back on, on our list. Go ahead.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you. Can't wait to walk through this and see what type of conversation it stimulates. I'm, I'm sure it will, which is good. But so, you know, I really respect and compliment the dialogue that just happened as it relates to all of the moving parts with site selection and facility design. We've tried to use past work and current work that Caleb has been thinking about and that this stakeholder advisory committee has been putting input in to talk about a, a, a size of a facility, a square footage of a facility. And we've done this in a way to break it down into components that could be stacked on top of each other, could be horizontal in nature, but knowing that the criteria that we have been asked to look at when the matrix was horizontal. But let me try to break it down as well as the thing, the last thing I'll say could be focused in one building from a, a public safety, you know, actual jail facility, could be separate mental health facilities on the same site or nearby and square footage about that. So I think a lot of the questions that were asked, if you look at this information with an open eye to it, you'll be able to see that we're trying to answer some of the questions that were posed earlier today. So this is a, a, a matrix that talks about how much square foot is required for a new public facility, a new correctional facility. And this square footage is based off of the list that Caleb and, and, and the group considered in August. So it includes a housing pod in that housing pod, which each one would be about nine thousand three hundred and fifty square feet, would have medical, recreational classrooms, visitations for, for the prosecuting attorney or the public defender as we've kind of been talking about. And in each pod could be stacked together horizontally and, and, and to, to make up a total square footage of housing areas of ninety-three thousand five hundred square feet. There, there is also the discussion about medical because currently, you know, the medical space in our current facility is, is very underutilized and undersized, a twelve thousand square feet. That is being talked about in the facility. And that is above and beyond what is the medical facilities in the housing pods itself. It would be a separate centralized location. Booking is where people come in and come out. A kitchen area, facilities and laundry. There needs to be a sheriff's office area and lockers. And then as always, to kind of to a tool's point, when you bring an engineer and architect to the table to talk about facility design, there's circulation and chase for the extra areas for, for, for access into the facility. So this would be a, a square footage for a, a potential of facility that meets the stakeholder advisory committee's list that's in there. So if you spread all this out horizontal, it would be three point six acres. It, it, it would be done in a way where the, the correctional staff that have that line of sight that we were talking about and, and, and three point six acres is about a hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Now, to answer one of the questions that came up earlier, if, if there was a decision to go vertical and, and, and place them on top of each other, how you would want to look at this information is the housing pods at ninety-three thousand five hundred square feet. Each pod is about ten thousand square feet, right? Ninety-three hundred square feet. Each pod itself would house about forty people, forty individuals could be in there. And if you only had one point three acres, right? Say you take the, the downtown and, and it's one point three acres, which is about fifty-six thousand square feet. You can start to do that math, Councilmember Liliquist, as it relates to the verticality of a facility. Exactly. And, and that would be about three stories, but in that scenario, it's about a six-story facility. Because each one is two stories to be able to have that two-tier operational that Caleb indicated earlier. So that's just some assumptions on square footage of a correctional facility. The, the next one, and that's current assumptions. And what I wanted to do was just.
Hey, Tyler, can you go back? How do you get six stories? So for example, if you took sheriff's office, facilities, laundry, kitchen, booking, medical, put them on one story around sixty thousand square feet.
Yep.
Fifty. And then you put two stories on top of that, there's your two stories.
Yep, the housing pod in this scenario, right? One housing pod, the ninety-three hundred and fifty square feet is actually two stories. And, and I'll let Caleb talk a little bit about that. There's, there's two levels of, of, of cells where people are, are, are housed in, in, in the kind of the, the correctional guidance of how to build these types of facilities.
Oh, I see. So the floor print for those two stories, the, the footprint is ninety-three hundred.
Correct.
If you, if you were the building official and you were measuring walkable habitable space, it'd be over ninety-three.
Correct.
Gotcha now.
Yep, thank you for that clarifying question because it, it is, it needed to be clarified.
Okay.
So the, the next thing that we just wanted to kind of truth this discussion is, is, is actual reports done by architects and engineers? And that's the DLR report from 2013. On the left of this slide is that public safety facility only discussion. It was the design that had two larger squares with the housing pods at a hundred and three thousand square feet. And then in total, that facility was about a hundred and sixty-three thousand square feet or three point seven five acres, which is pretty, pretty close, pretty consistent with what we talked about at the slide right before. So, so that was just to kind of truth that understanding. And, and as that tool indicated, you know, you need engineers, you need architects to do some of this work. And so we wanted to recognize that this was built upon some of that work already. On the right side is the overall site plan discussion. This would be if there was more of a, a facility that had a multitude of different services. If, if this group decides we want to include the crisis stabilization center, a, a mental health facility, a, 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 whatever decision would come out of the additional needs for behavioral health. And if it was located on one site, I'm not saying that that's the decision. I'm just wanted to recognize what that would look like. But this would be an overall site planning effort that would turn this conversation into more like eleven to fourteen acres on one site. Or, you know, in, in the, in the third lane, it's buildings, one, two, and three. Those could be the mental health facilities at about forty-five thousand square feet. And, and you could then start to play with how do those fit within the sites that we have available? And, and where does that go? So that's the background we wanted to offer the group in consideration of square footage. And we wanted to make sure that that was done so that as we start to answer these questions or as we start to, to have some dialogue about the matrix, there is some actual numbers to go into play with the sites that we're going to be talking about.
That's great. Thank you, Tyler. So we're going to keep this, I, I think actually we need to jump into looking at the matrix so we have enough time to actually talk. So if it's really brief, Caleb, go ahead.
One component that I wanted to bring up, and I was actually in response to, I think, a question that Ral brought up, is the question of whether we have a mental health facility that does the work of restoration in our community is a big question that we have to answer. But we have to recognize also that the con, the, the concept of having that mental health facility is a supporting arm to the structure already existing in our criminal justice process. We don't, we're not suggesting at this point that we would put people in a mental health facility as an alternative to being incarcerated. What currently happens is people who are in the criminal justice process and require restoration don't have a place to go. And that necessarily lengthens their length of stay because there are very few options at the state level for that kind of work. And so what we're talking about when we talk about a restoration piece in our community is that element of the criminal justice process.
Just a quick direct response, yeah, I, I was clear on that. And, but it seemed like Wendy Jones was maybe suggesting that that legally, like by statute, not possible. Is that true?
I think that there are definitely some barriers right now as, as the, the law exists today that would prevent us from doing that wholesale here. But I know that Councilmember Buchanan is interested in seeing if there's a direction that we can go to change some of that. a direction that we can go to change some of that. And that is a part of a bigger discussion.
Great. Thank you. Excellent. Okay. So let's shift in. We're going to go through the matrix, which you also got via email, correct? Y'all saw that in your packet? And the point here, um, is, is really to just see what, uh, what additional consideration? So here's, you know, we've started to try and kind of fill this in from what we've heard so far. And, um, and as we talk about it, we have all these different criteria. And so we want to take about fifteen minutes here to just crank through these. You, again, hopefully you all had a chance to look at this in your packet, but what's, what's missing here? Oh, they got a blank matrix. Marty just texted me. Okay, so they are now, you guys are now seeing it for the first time. Sorry about that. I thought you got the full end matrix. This was all. Can you just imagine how fast we had to turn this stuff around? So everybody like, wow! This was a lot to turn it around. So here we are. We are here now. Here are the comparisons and what we want to do is look at pros, cons, and then also cost considerations. Bearing in mind what Michael pointed out earlier, you know, a lot of this is, is in motion, right? So when you look at capacity, Kayla, uh, Tyler, did you want to flag some things in here to open the conversation or anybody else?
No, go ahead, Holly. I, I just, you know, recognizing that, um, this was just to stimulate the discussion uh, with the stakeholder advisory committee. And like you indicated, from Friday until today, we tried to answer some of these questions. And you'll see that there's positives for, for some sites and, and positives for other sites. Um, and, and just trying to, and if there's any questions on it, I'm, I'm here to be able to, to help on it.
Great. So let's just pause. Can everybody see it? Okay. Can you all see it? Okay. Thanks, Kendra. Okay, Atul. Yeah, anything you'd like to add here?
Um, well, I'm taken aback by the chart, um, but I won't go into that. I will, um, ask, answer the question. Um, and the question is about criteria. So, um, the way this chart, chart is currently structured is it has pros and cons. But what I think might be more helpful is the chart that lists a series of criteria. And rank orders those criteria as kind of Brell was suggesting. And I think, uh, council member Liliquess was also heading in that direction. So I would support an approach where we had, what, what this group does is identify a list of criteria and rank orders those criteria. And then applies each of those criteria to each of these three sites. And this is not that chart.
So we've got all criteria that went around the first slide and we're going to go through each one on this chart. So this is the first one. And so we've got, um, so you're right, the, the weighting of the different criterias you go through, maybe it's not as explicit as we would ideally like. But why don't we just take them as this is a way to help us frame the discussion? So let's just stick with, so on the capacity.
Let me list some criteria and if that's okay.
The criteria were on this slide before. Would it help if I backed up one?
Yes.
Okay. So these are the ones we're going to go through. So these are the ones we talked about at the last SAC meeting with some additional clarifications.
So I'd like to add, uh, criteria, which is access, access to, uh, legal advocacy, access to family.
Okay.
Um, that's criteria. I'd also like to add, um, other criteria as well, but those are the two most important. But in addition to that, I'd like to also add criteria which are, uh, maintainability and flexibility.
Great. Okay. So at the end of discussion, so if you have, so we're, so Atul, at the end of our discussion, when we go into it, um, and I'm sure for other folks too, if there's other criteria, when you think about it, you think are important considerations when evaluating the three sites, that, that's a good time to mention those. So, um, appreciate that.
Well, I should raise my hand again, or, or can we just register those for now?
That those are additional criteria. Thanks. Good, good point. So noted. So you don't have to raise your hand again. Yep, check. But when we get to the end, how you feel about those criteria relative to the choices would be helpful. So let's move to the next slide. And guys, I really need everybody to be working together here and working with me so we can get through this and really make sure everybody has a chance to speak. Yeah. And that we try and really think about, given what we know now, what do we need to be understanding and thinking about? Okay. So Michael, go ahead.
Well, this is an, an, an odd one because it, it, it says, if we've already decided to go horizontal, then how do the sites look? Right? It's already, so we're already one fork down the road. And some of the things in here are odd, like that, that dynamic dependency. It says the land values are really high. For example, in the civic center, you already on the land, the land, land costs are zero. And as I said, there's actually negative land costs if you can then sell a Ferndale one. So it's odd that that would be a cost consideration because as I read it, it cuts the other direction. So um, and then, um, worried about the entitlement process and the permitting process with the city of Bellingham, really? That's a cost consideration?
Great, thanks. Okay. So Brell, I see your hand up. And I just want to say for those of you who are big speakers, just if you can give space also for those who don't speak as much to also share their thoughts. And for those who haven't spoken up, I'd really love to hear from you too. So yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. Uh, I think this is a question for Tyler. Um, must acquire additional property not under county ownership? This is under Iron Gate cost considerations. Do we know for a fact that we can purchase the required land there or is it a maybe?
Yeah, good question, Peter. And, um, it is, uh, maybe. There is, there is no certainty to ability to acquire additional property. Um, as I was filling, as we were filling this chart out and with the frame of mind of a horizontal facility, which I knew was going to cause some questions, right? And so I was glad that council member Liliquess kind of pointed that out because it is, um, it, it fills this first frame out fairly straightforward. But Peter, in, in the Iron Gate facility, there's only about ten acres available. Um, and there would be, it would be a tight fit for that horizontal structure that we talked about even at the Iron Gate facility. And there would need to be some additional conversations with adjacent property owners uh, to see if you could acquire, which would make that site maybe more appropriate. Um, there's been dialogue, but there is no certainty to that dialogue. Does that help answer your question, Peter?
Yep, great. Okay, Cliff, go ahead. Hmm, you might be muted. Hmm, I think you're still muted. There you go.
There we go. Okay, good. I'm sorry. Um, as we're talking about this, one of the things that, that I think that, I don't know, I, have we considered Bellingham is only part of the community that we're talking about. We have communities throughout the, you know, that's a long distance away. And, um, and we have agencies that are a long distance away. And Bellingham is getting more and more traffic and populated, and it makes it more and more difficult to get around. So I just wanted to see, are we considering some of the other communities, some of the other agencies, they have to transport to court and come in and get people and bring in arrests. Um, so anyway, just, it's just something I thought that we should make sure that we're considering as we discuss this.
So the, the question is, I'm still not quite tracking you. That, that, uh, looking at other sites, Cliff, or just the, the reality of people coming true and fro in this, in this situation?
Well, okay, so. Am I muted still?
Nope.
Okay, okay. No, I, I'm thinking, um, every, you know, we tend to be looking at a lot of this. Uh, we've got two sites in Bellingham and the one in Ferndale. And I'm just wondering, as we consider the sites, are we considering what other communities and agencies have to go through to get to, for example, downtown Bellingham or even Iron Gate? Um, as the population and traffic, it, it just seems like it's getting worse.
I see your point now. Okay. Thank you for clarifying. All right, Brell.
Um, yeah, uh, building off of what Liliquess asked or mentioned about some of the dynamic elements of being able to sell one property and um, I guess I'm curious, this is going to sound maybe a little ignorant, but like, is there any, just like a ballpark number of what any facility would cost? Like, like the facility itself, like? And, and is there, is there a way to, to, to have like compare, cost comparison of the three sites? Is that, is that possible? Or is it, is that premature right now? I don't know, Tyler, you have any, any thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, I gotta have lots of thoughts on it. And I, I knew the question was going to come up and I am not entirely sure how to answer it, um, Brell. Um, you know, last go around in, in two thousand fifteen or so. Construction of this type of facility was around a hundred and ten million dollars. Um, now there's been a lot of perspective on it. You could do it a little bit uh, less expensive. Um, and from two thousand and thirteen to now, I think we all can recognize what the cost of construction has done. Um, and that's the factor that plays into it. So I don't know what ballpark is a ballpark that you're, you're interested in hearing. Uh, but if you took a hundred million dollars, which is a similar number to what Bellingham School District's new schools cost, right? I mean, it is a cost that's, that's equitable to other large facilities. And you put a cost of construction in there, uh, you're, you're getting near around one, a hundred and fifty million dollars for that type of facility. As a ballpark with an asterisk, just to, to have dialogue with, with this community or with this committee. Um, if the, the other question about putting a cost to these, um, it, it, it's, it would require a pretty good effort. Um, that would probably need some professionals to be hired and, and to be done to understand what the cost of, of each three of these sites would be. Um, so that, that I, I don't think I'd be able to answer that question.
I thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it's a question on everyone's mind. Okay. I'm looking at the time and I think we're going to adjust our process here. So what I'm going to do is have Kathy go through the slides. I'm going to ask that you just jot down notes as you look at them. I'm going to try and not rush us too fast. And then people can also fill out their matrix and send it in. Yeah, Kendra, good thinking there. And we'll also get you the PowerPoint. But I think what we should do is just look at the different criteria. And then we'll open the floor for discussion because otherwise we're going to run out of time. So this one is a, a beginning of an evaluation of capacity with the question of adjacent space that could be used or purchased for future expansion if needed. So just take a look. Okay. Here we go. Let's do the next slide. This is location through the lens of proximity to the criminal legal system resources. We talked a lot about this. I remember why it jumped out at me because this, this really came up at the end for our last conversation. So here's thinking about it through that lens of proximity to the criminal legal system resources. Okay. Yep. Let's do the next one. So here's two other location cr- uh, points of evaluation. Proximity to work set, the work center is the first one. And then proximity to crisis services is the next one. So the crisis stabilization center, hospital, fire station, and EMS. So let's take a minute and review those. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Okay, proximity to community behavioral health services and proximity to public transit. Those are these, these next two. Got it? Okay. Thanks, Kendra. That's helpful. If I can queue off somebody, that's really great. Okay, this is the location, the distance from schools and high density residential area, which we had a little conversation about those being maybe a lower weight. But nonetheless, here's the, here are the considerations. As we understand them so far.
One point, if I could, Holly, just real quickly, the COM plan now indicates at least one quarter mile from public or private schools. It originally was one mile and it's been reduced to one quarter mile.
Oh, good clarification. Great. That kind of answers that discrepancy that came up earlier. Yeah, great. Great. Okay. Ready? All right, next. Okay, compatibility with neighborhood uses, neighboring uses and the aesthetic impact on the community character. And of course, based on your own experience, you might have a different perception here. I appreciate, um, Brooke jumping in earlier too on this. Okay, good. Yep. All right, next. Okay, so here we are. This is where we'd love to hear from everybody about, you know, given what we've heard so far and seen and given the limitations of our time together. Um, we really are curious where people stand right now and what they are thinking about for the best options. And are there any options that we can rule out at this point? And lastly, what additional information do you think is needed so that we can make recommendations to this happen? And I don't, you know, we'll see where we, where we stand today. I've, I have no idea where we are. So let's go ahead. We'll take off the screen. Um, I would like to hear from everybody who has not yet had a moment to speak or has not spoken yet. And then we'll hear from folks who've already spoken. So Kendra, you're up.
Hi, just a quick question to clarify on the slide when it says cost of consideration under the civic center. It says none except offsetting costs for replacing parking. Can you explain to me about what the, what does that mean?
Yeah, um, the anticipation, I guess, would be that the south parking lot, just south of the courthouse, which is, um, utilized by county um, parking would have to be replaced. Um, so that would either be in-ground parking or, or at a different location. And so it was just recognizing that if that was, site was picked, that there is that cost consideration.
Good. Okay, um, and I'm just doing the math right now. So Arlene, I'm going to have you speak and then, uh, I'm going to try another technique here. So Arlene, go ahead.
Yes, I'm starting with one of the last things that you, uh, asked about. I think we should rule out Ferndale as a choice. It looks less preferable on a lot of. It looks less preferable on a lot of fronts. So that would be my opinion on that. Um, the issue of replacement parking is hugely expensive. That is not a small thing. That is an enormous cost. And should be recognized as not just some small thing that has to be done. My preference would be Iron Gate, and I want to point out that there's WTA transportation there. However, since I work there, I know that it's once a day. So you have to negotiate with double WTA about more frequent service. That would be something very essential, but not that really big of a deal. I think pri- regarding priorities, um, the most important thing that most people that have been, uh, asked about their opinion about all this is behavioral health services. We have to keep it in our mind that that is a major primary priority in all of our planning. And it's been a lacking piece of the jail as long as we can imagine it. So the planning for that needs to be front and forward, absolutely. I think it's necessary to treat people in the jail because the jail itself has been traumatic for anybody who stays there for any length of time. Of course, if the building is better and more humane, which it is not now, then it will be less traumatic. But lot, being locked up, period, the end, is very traumatic for any, anybody, even a, an old hand at it. So I want to see the attention focused on space for counseling rooms, group counseling rooms, twelve-step meetings. I want a lot of, I want to see a lot of space set aside for those services. It's also important to provide aftercare. That is to say, extend mental health services when people are released. So we need follow-through on that piece to keep the people from coming back to jail. That's one of the reasons. We need navigators to do that kind of work. Navigation is now being funded and is beginning to happen in a lot of places. What we need definitely navigators at the front end in the justice system. When people have public defenders are, and are facing possibly jail. We need them at that point. We need them perhaps in the jail as well regarding the cases. And after, afterwards, to support people, most of whom have serious mental illnesses and need a great deal of support. This is the population that would have been in a long-term mental hospital in the past.
You're here. I, you're, I'm so happy to hear you just talking about this, because we're, these recommendations are also part of what we're gonna come back to and already, and I've been working on that. So I'm like, oh, good. We've got those. So I'm gonna shift our process here. And Scott, I do use your hand. I think what we need to do at this moment is actually do a straw poll and really get a sense of where people are at. So, um, because if we, I, I'm looking at the clock and if we all speak, we are gonna run out of time. And I really think we should just take stock at this moment. So you can either turn on your camera and raise your hand, or you can use the hand raising function. And I'm gonna call out the three sites and we're gonna straw poll. This is ju- a straw poll means this is not definitive. We're not voting. We're just trying to get a sense of where people are at. Okay? So I'll call them out one at a time. For my Marty and, and Kath, if you can help just do the count, so I don't have to. And we'll just see where people are at. So I'm gonna call them in this order. I'll call for Civic Center, then I'll call for Iron Gate, and then I'll call for Ferndale. And I want you to hold your hand up or put your hand up long enough so we can just get a sense, where do we sit right now with the limited information we have? Okay, so first one, please, please, everybody raise your hand. If your first choice from what you know right now is the Civic Center as a location.
Hey, Holly, how do you want us to respond if we don't have a strong opinion on any of the locations?
Oh, I'm so glad you asked that. And I'll, I'll, I'll have that as option four. How about that? If you don't have a strong opinion, we'll do option four. Okay, so Civic Center as their, as your first choice. Excellent. Marty and Kathy, did you get that count? I'm gonna see, not from Marty. Thanks. Okay, then let's look at Iron Gate as her preferred option. If everybody pops around on the screen and so.
Make sure you took your hand down if you voted on the last.
Oh, yeah.
And you don't want to vote on Iron Gate.
Otherwise, you'll vote on everyone. Okay, so hands are up on this one. If the, if the Iron Gate facility, and keep your hand up if that's your preferred one, and make sure your hands down if it's not. Okay, super. All right, and then let's move to Ferndale. So put your hands down if you, um, Barry, you can't vote for more than one. Good job. Okay. Okay. Great. All right. So, and then we'll do option four, as Erica has wisely suggested. Raise your hand if you actually don't have a strong preference at this time. Wonderful. Okay. Did everybody, so we got two on that. Kendra, were you on that, that number four right now? Okay, perfect. Okay, so the, did everyone give vo- get, get a chance, raise your hand? Is there anybody who didn't vote? I'm assuming that, or, you know, this isn't a vote, sorry. Who did not participate in the straw poll?
Uh, Stephen, I'll call you back. I'm gonna meet.
Great, thanks.
I did not vote, Holly. I, I, I can vote, but I thought it would be best if Executive Sidhu was here to do that on.
Okay. Anybody else who didn't vote? Just so I know.
I'm officially a member, so I didn't vote.
Good. And Caleb, you also didn't vote? Thank you for, for that. Okay. So, um, Scott, I had mentioned you, you, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, and the reason I voted for Ferndale, um, I guess I don't, I see the civic location downtown is, the problem we have today is we're boxed in. And if we do that again, we'll be boxed in. And I think this is a, I'll say thirty-two-hundred-year decision for us. And if it is, we're gonna get boxed in again. And I know Ferndale has the most location. So that is the only, I would have choose, chosen Iron Gate as a, as a second one, but because I'm worried that this is such a long-term decision. And, and I, I, I own enough property to know if I'm next to something important, it's worth a lot of money to sell someday. If people wanna buy it from me. So that's, that's why I chose the Ferndale location. And I guess I looked to maybe legal services from the private sector, and then there's, of course, the, uh, the public sector, legal services. Over time, if that's for the facilities at, say, Ferndale, if, over time, fifteen years from now, they'll probably all be over there buying up land around it and moving legal services to the jail as opposed to staying where they're at. So I, that is a, in my mind, relative to the location of the Dale, a short-term problem. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to actually ask for people who have not yet spoken today. I'm gonna stick with that. So I see, for example, yeah. So Kristen, and I see like Harriet and Teresa and, uh, you know, Deborah and Eve. We would love to hear from you. And there's a couple other folks. So, yeah, go ahead. Kristen, what's your thoughts?
Well, I, I guess since we're talking about why we voted, some of us, I voted for the Civic Center site because I can't stress enough how important it is to keep in focus on what this is about. It's a jail, and this is about people whose fate, their bodies are being locked up in this place. And their fate is being decided by court, by the courts, right? By, by judge. And if we remove the people from it, it just doesn't make sense that the very people, the reason why we have a jail is because they're being locked up until the court decides. It's not a long-term thing. These are mostly pre-trial people who have a right to a speedy trial. If they're in jail, that's like sixty days. You know, let's keep in perspective that this isn't about warehousing people. If it's for long-term, it's usually prison. There's severe mental health. It's severe competency issues. It's, it's removed from a, for a short time and put into a civil type of a, a setting, uh, as far as incompetence. But this has to do with people who are in jail. They need to be by their lawyers and by the courts that are deciding their fate. Like I just said, in person, in person, in my opinion.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so other people who haven't spoken, Erica, I know you had a process question, but do you have any thoughts? Any things that, that come up for you when you think about the choices?
You know, I'm here primarily thinking about the behavioral health and services side of it and less on the, the court proceedings and those kinds of things. So I feel more comfortable hearing from others who have that expertise than sharing my own thoughts and opinions at this time.
Thanks. Teresa, are you ready? I saw your camera. Come on. Teresa, did you wanna speak? Look, are you, there you go.
I, my first thought is room. We need room. Um, I, you know, I'll be down actually near detox this evening. Uh, you know, I have a commitment there tonight. And, and I just think that you, you know, you can put the people that are going to be locked up anywhere, because they're going to be locked up. But what about all the people that are going to be providing services? You know, carrying the message, trying to give them some hope that they're, you know, that they can recover, that they can change, that they can do something better with their lives. Where can we park? You know, just the logistics of the building, the room, you know, that's, that's what I think of. And so Iron Gate just makes perfect sense to me.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking. Yeah, Harriet, thanks for raising your hand.
Everybody's pretty much covered the territory. Um, I think Iron Gate, I think none of them are ideal. Iron Gate's a good compromise. Um, I agree that downtown is too boxed in. Um, and there's just not enough space for everything that needs to be contained within this broad spectrum of, um, things. Parking, services, room for expansion, all of that. And Iron Gate would at least give us that. And as Arlene suggested, I think the issue of transportation and working with county to, or the city, whoever it is, to get better bus service, et cetera, and it's not that long a drive for attorneys, families, et cetera. I, I just think that, given everything that we need, it's gonna be the best option. And it strongly has my support.
Thank you. I really appreciate, or I just wanna suggest in the way that you listen, like to be influenced by each other, to hear and consider each other is so important right now, because if we don't come to unity eventually, you know, we won't, we won't. But if we can be influenced by each other's thinking, and I, I'm really listening. Eve or Deborah, do either, if you wanna jump in. Stark, I do use your hand. So I'm gonna give you a chance for sure. Kendra, go ahead.
Just a question for Caleb or Sheriff Elfo, actually. Oh, the, my concern is the transportation of the inmates to the courthouse. And so for transportation, for my aspect, is the transportation safety for the staff. What is the highest risk for the staff to be transporting the inmates to and from the court? Because that's a lot of travel with that. And so I would like to have that aspect of it too, otherwise. I'm just trying to, still trying to figure out the options between the three. Thank you.
Thanks. Great. Eve, you're up.
Thanks. Um, just a couple of thoughts, um, in terms of like horizontal buildings. I, I just feel like with the hospital, it's multi-layer leveled, and that doesn't impact their ADA or accessibility. So I feel like building up can also be an option there. Um, and for the bus system, you know, it's not very accessible. If it's on the bottom of a hill, I'm not sure how people are, you know, we have to be aware of how people can access Iron Gate. Um, if the bus line's on hand again, um, that's not an easy walk up the hill for some folks, um, or families. Um, I also really appreciated what Michael wrote in his letter or public comment about establishing care within the jail, but also with partners that can provide care after, so that there isn't that, um, loss of service or connection with clients. And, uh, let's see, what else did I write? I just, there's, there's so much. There, there are many studies that show that when people are connected with community-based efforts, that they don't go back to jail. And I just think that's one of the reasons I really believe in the Civic Center location, because we want people to be connected to services so that they don't, um, aren't, aren't put back into that system. You know, our goal here, eventually, you know, I should be not incarcerating people. It should be healing our community. It should be providing care for our neighbors. And, you know, it's, the goal isn't to jail more people. It's also to create more services so that less of our community is incarcerated.
Yeah, thank you. So Deborah or RB or, um, who hasn't, who also hasn't had a chance to speak, Phil, it's one other person. RB, go ahead.
If I heard correctly earlier, is that the square footage requirements, doesn't that exclude this Civic Center area? I mean, where people have been saying that it's boxed in. Is it even practical if we're deciding that a horizontal facility is what is best? That's best practice. Then should we not decide on that? And then the, the site really is, is dictated by how much square footage is necessary?
Yeah, I think you're dialing into exactly a kind of a core, core issue there. It's how strongly do you believe that, that that would be a criteria? Yeah. Okay, Strick, you've been waiting for quite a while and I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I, I totally, I totally agree with what RB just had to say here. My, Tyler's presentation was, uh, you know, I thought, as usual, spot on. You know, however, you know, I feel, you know, that we're also getting channeled towards Ferndale because that, as a practical matter, is the site from a, from a space standpoint that will accommodate the kind of facility that, that i- is the most desirable. And it's, and even, even, uh, Iron Gate is, I think, what Tyler said is, would be tight to build the kind of facility that we want. So, I mean, if, if that's the direction that we're headed here, you, you know, let's, let's just call it out and, and say it that, you know, that's the direction we're being channeled. But I, I do wanna say, I wanna return to the question I asked at the beginning, which was, has anybody considered an imminent domain or condemnation action? And, you know, once upon a time, I five didn't exist. And, and they decided, the state decided where I five ought to go. And they went through and they condemned every single piece of property between Watcom County and, and Seattle in order to build I five. And, and I'm not, I'm not a civil lawyer, but I, I believe that the county has the same power that the state has to decide what the best site is for this facility. And then go out and, and, you know, essentially force the landowners to, to, uh, be compensated for, for their property and put the facility where it is best for, for Watcom County. And, you know, it, it, from my perspective, and I admit, I've got, I've got my own bias here. But, but from my perspective, the closer to the courthouse, the better for, for those of us that work in the system. You know, and, and beyond that, it needs to be enough land to build the facility that we wanna build on. But, you know, before we, you know, before we jump off a cliff here on these three sites, as if they are the only ones that exist, it seems to me there ought to be some consideration given to, you know, what our other options are here.
Yeah, thank you. I'm really hearing that value about being close to the services, both for community, you know, community services and, and community members, families, and also to the court services. So we have like ten seconds, Wendy, before I wrap this up. You have the floor.
Just some information. One is that a larger site would allow us to co-locate the staff and the offenders at the work center and what the equivalent would be to the downtown jail. Secondly, the WTA bus. Secondly, the WTA bus stop didn't exist where it is right now over in Iron Gate until the work center was built. And thirdly, if you look, a lot of the services that we're talking about for mental health and substance abuse are in fact not placed in the civic center. And you find them at Pardada or over by like Wacom or in a lot of different places. So things to consider when you're looking overall. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, so on that note, everybody, if you, um, we'll send out the sheet that we worked on today. You can send back with your comments. I want to acknowledge that we still have quite a bit of of variety in our opinions on this. And some really important considerations were raised that I think really have have expanded our understanding. So I just want to again, thank you all for being here. That was an excellent conversation. And um, I think we did the best we could in an hour and a half over Zoom. So you can give us like, yay, us. This is this is not uh, easy stuff. And again, thank you so much, uh, you know, for Wendy and Caleb, who provided a lot of great background for Tyler for doing this like massive, like try and pull all this stuff together and to Marty. And to everyone on the planning team and Marty especially. Thank you, guys. You really, you really did yourselves proud today. So we'll see you guys soon. We'll do some more stuff on email and have a great rest of your week. Thank you for being here. Bye.